Thursday, July 23rd, 2020, at 6:00 PM. Members present are Mark McKeever, Kevin Myers, James Mee, Lisa Allsepp, and myself. Up first, Besire City Joint Regular Committee meeting was called to order by myself at 6:00 PM. And first thing I want to start off with is, as Mr. Bradlin put that on, I'm going to make a statement. That is about the only mask that I've seen that can actually protect somebody and keep anybody safe because you're sealing around the orifices of your nose and your mouth. Otherwise, it's a placebo. So that's my opinion. I'll leave it at that. Up next, we have the discussion for possibly moving our meetings to go-to meeting versus in-person during this time of wearing a mask mandate. So I'm bringing that up so we can have that discussion.
Can I speak?
Yes.
I'm going to share my opinion. I like being in person. I really do. I think we do better as a group of people, meeting in person. But I also know that it's another one of those divisive topics. And I don't know which is going to be better, to meet in a comfort of our own homes so they're not getting scrutinized every step of the way.
I know.
But I really enjoy meeting in person, too. So I'd be all right with either way you guys want it.
I agree 100%. I do think, I guess, this time with not just a scrutinization, but more if this is what we really deem, first off, why did we wait 24 hours to make it mandatory? But more than anything, if we really do need to watch out and protect, I think being apart is probably the best way to protect yourselves.
You need to wait 24 hours to get your Army-Navy shirtless story.
So I guess, anybody, Lisa?
I don't have a problem being scrutinized. I'm not comfortable wearing a mask. Don't intend to. But when we're all here in a room, I think it's easier for us to get things done because you know who's going to speak next, and it just flows better.
Absolutely, I agree.
And I think it's more available to the public that way. People that are, I think those doors should stay open. And I think that if people want to wear masks, they can wear masks. And if people don't, they don't have to. I'm not, I'm not their mom or dad.
Anybody else?
It's me, it's me. I think, pretty much like Lisa said, I'd rather be here in person.
I just think it's more of a...
I agree. It was just that it was something that was brought up, so we wanted to have the discussion, give everybody the chance to weigh in with their opinions.
I'd say, I'm, you know, okay though.
I agree with Lisa. I mean, we communicate better up here.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
But I'll go along with whatever you guys decide.
Leave it on the table, revisit it after we see how things go.
Definitely. So I just like said, wanted to get it out there, so if we do, we have this option and we can move forward. So up next, we have public participation. Any person from the general public that has something to say, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and please keep it to the topics that we have on schedule tonight. No way. All right, we'll move on then. Order committee business. Up first, we have economic development, and we will call economic development to order at 6:04 PM. In your packet, you have Besire's tourism and visitors bureau appointment. I would like, I guess, at this point, honestly, open the floor up to Mr. Myers. As you are the person that is our representative on the board there, give us a little feedback, what's going on, and what we need to do here.
First off, I'll clarify, I am not the city's representative. Oh, yes, Yocum was the city's representative. I am not.
Okay, you're a member.
I was in the previous council, the city's representative, and then Ms. Yocum was the... But as you see in the letter that came from myself and our vice president, with the resignation of Candace Yocum, that effectively removed her as the council's representative. We're requesting a replacement appointment in the council. I'm prepared to ask, to make a motion to ask Mr. Foke to represent the city council for the duration of his term expiring December 31st, 2021.
You made a motion.
How do you feel about that?
Huh?
I'd already asked him if he would.
Oh, okay.
He already heard the train.
I just wondered, he didn't look real, he had a blank stare.
When he does that, what do you try to? I do that when I've already got another lobby motion, but I'll take another one.
I'd like to second the motion, but I wanted to make sure that it was okay with him.
Yep, absolutely. I don't mind taking on a little bit more if it helps the community. So all those in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed, if you don't want to? All right, so I guess I will be our new representative. I will recess economic development at 6:05 PM.
Okay, I will call fighting to order at 6:05. Concorde Drive's rezoning proposal, as everybody was there at the meeting, at the public hearing, about the Concorde Drive. And from the feedback from the audience and the members who live at Concorde, I didn't really hear any objection to changing the whole area to the R3. Feel free, if you have any other comments or questions, please speak up and let us know what you're thinking and what the other members of the Concorde Drive condominiums were, if they had any other questions or concerns.
So the rezoning of all of it being R3 would be with the condo association grandfather in as such? Okay, perfect.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
So...
Okay. Without Bruce here, I kind of...
Bruce, George, sorry.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Just confirming, we're talking regular legislation that's been requested?
They didn't say anything about time constraints.
No, I thought they said it wasn't an emergency.
I take care of that being said.
Did they require one?
They weren't, they said they weren't.
It just means we go through three readings, which will take six weeks.
Oh, okay, before you actually vote to do it.
It just keeps moving on, and that gives the public six weeks to mull it over. If somebody has an objection or a question, they can bring it to our attention.
That doesn't mean you have to come every time.
No, no.
Yeah, you don't have to.
We're looking for somebody.
So with that being said, are you, you're getting ready to pass it, or to pass it back?
Well, we're putting it to full legislation for council to vote on after the three readings.
Okay, so...
We're passing this to go to council as a poll.
Okay.
The only coming out of committee.
Okay, I was wondering, because I, is that when they will do the follow-up about the streetlights and the things that we had previously talked about where there were some...
Yeah, which is one of the streetlights to be like they, as close to what they are.
So what it would do would go to our first reading, our August 4th, or you guys would get it back in committee, or would the legislation be prepared for the next meeting? So August 4th, it would have its first reading. August 18th, its second reading. September 1st, its third and final reading, if there was no objections. And on September 3rd, this body could vote to pass that, and then 30 days from then, it becomes law.
Okay.
But she's wanting to make sure, correct me if I'm wrong, she's wanting to make sure that...
The lighting.
The lighting and...
We talked about sidewalks, garages, lighting.
Was all that stuff going to be mentioned in there? I think it's encompassed in that, is it not?
Yeah, the, the, those are...
I can't, I just can't.
Those are the things, so the things between the developer and the condo association.
Not the lights, the lights are the city thing.
Well, if the city's putting in lights, then that's going to be whatever the city's opinion is on putting in the lights. It won't affect the zoning change.
Okay.
The zoning change is just clearly changing the zoning.
And what, a good way to do that is have all your condominium residents sign a letter addressing it to the mayor so that you're wanting the lights to...
Okay. So let me ask you this, is it something that, so with this development and it being zoned R3, things like that, is, because I know it is in the requirements for R3 zoning, that streetlights are there. And so because we don't want the big industrial ones, because that would just be silly, that is something, though, that has to be done through the city. So we had talked to Monica and Sam, that's the landowners, and they said, hey, you know, we can possibly add that cost to the lots or whatever, to put in the kind of lighting that we would like. So I don't know how, yeah, the pole lights, rather than the big industrial streetlights with all the wires.
We have, we have that in other places.
Yeah.
So it, you know, I don't see the administration objecting to that.
Okay.
Because, you know, if you're covering the cost, the city will be more...
Yeah, they'll be more than happy to not.
I just didn't know, because it's a requirement of the zoning, so I didn't know if we could bypass around that and say, hey, you know, if we're...
Well, you're not bypassing, you're going to have streetlights. But you, in that area, I mean, if, if the landowners and the condominium associations are, you know, in agreement, and they approach the administration saying, we're going, we'd like to pick up the cost of these lights and show them what lights they want, I don't really see them objecting. And if you run into a headwind, then you can come to council, and we can get that taken care of.
So that would need to be addressed with the mayor? That would need to be signed and sent in to him?
Right. It'd be a good way to do it, and probably show some photos of what you're recommending, and also have it from Sam to how he, that, how he was going to help cover that, and what type of lighting you all were interested in, and it should be no problem. And address it to him, to both Jeff and Jeff, and they will be glad to get back with you on that. I don't see any objection. And like I said, if you do run into a problem, then you can come back to council, and then we can discuss it and go further, correct? Don't, don't wait six weeks to do it. No, no, no.
Do it this week, yeah.
Yeah, do it, do it this week.
Get it typed up, signed, and everything, and get it sent in.
And get it in first next week, then get it, that's the best way. Don't, don't wait till...
No, I'm not procrastinating.
Go, go. And just tell, it's just to show support. If people have questions, just say, this is just to show support that we want these type of lighting.
Okay.
And that you're going to add it onto the lot. That it isn't going to really come out of your pockets, it's going to come out of the homeowners.
Yeah, right.
So I don't see how your president is going to object.
Yeah.
That's true.
Come down, slide your lap.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I would wait till next week, instead tomorrow, because they're probably going to be busy up here putting in the new mandate of the governors.
Right, yeah, I can have it typed up, like, next week, and get it, get it up here, get it sent in, or drop it off or whatever, so no problem.
All right, I had a motion and a second. So all those in favor, say aye. Aye, aye, motion passed. I will adjourn, plating at 6:12, and call finance at 6:11. All right.
Thank you all.
First thing on the agenda is the manpower ordinance. So, questions, comments?
Well, what I did on the manpower ordinance after what we talked last time was the, I combined the two ordinances, so the service safety director is now part of the entire manpower ordinance. The issue why it wasn't previously is because the service safety director was with all the supervisors. All those supervisory positions have been eliminated, so it just wasn't one of the waters. I combined everything, and I used the numbers from the original pieces of legislation that had not passed. So the financial numbers are what was in those, and put everything together. The issue was brought up about the not having to revisit this every three years when we do the contracts. We really can't do that, there's just no way to incorporate the changes that are necessary in the pay scale. Joyce, for auditor purposes, has to have that pay scale, has to be able to demonstrate to the auditors what those pay scales are. And those pay scales change every time that we change the, every time it raises the union contracts. So we have to update that every three years, every year.
Is there any way, because I know, like, when the ASME contract goes through, that information comes to council to vote to approve that? Is there any way that these pay rates could be included in that legislation automatically? Or is that, oh, there's too much difference?
Or at least the same time?
And the issue there, the issue there is, the issue there is there's three different unions covered in this manpower ordinance.
So it's not just ASME?
It's not just ASME.
Okay, all right.
There are, there are two other unions covered. And if you look at historically, we've updated this manpower ordinance, we've made amendments to the manpower ordinance in the interim period, because with things that changed, increase of fire, it also required changes in this. So there's more than just the ASME contract.
But do all three of the unions come up at the same time?
No.
And there's no way to unify that, so that everybody is...
No, you totally...
We can, and it used to be all done in the same, the same period. So that, that becomes problematic, because you have to, because you're saying with three unions...
You're like, all three of your teenagers having a big sleepover at the same time.
Yeah, I got you, yeah.
So we separate, it's a fine, they follow each other. So this is kind of the best thing to do, as far as...
Okay, like, like you said, okay, fine, but can we make it so that when the, when the third and final is up for, because this comes out every three years with this, it falls in the same timeframe as the ASME?
This does.
That's what I'm saying. But that, by, when the, when it does fall, that we, even if we have to adjust it during the other two union adjustments, we can make this still say, on the year of the ASME contract being approved, this will be brought to council at the same time.
Yeah.
This is always brought to council at the same time.
But are we, is that the, is that the job of the administration to bring it to us?
Yeah, I mean, this always gets brought to you, not, not in the same meeting as the ASME. Because until you approve the ASME, we don't know what's going to be in this. So once you approve the ASME, then this gets referred.
Got you.
Okay.
And then you can bring it.
That's all been well with, you know, the current group we have in here, but, you know, part of what I think we're attempting to do is try to set this up for our replacements now, rather than have to go through the same issues.
And if you think about it, when you're talking about the constitutional type of the, that in a city charter or in a city constitution, this always goes with that. We don't have that, we're statutory cities, so it's not going to have to be done every three years. I kind of went through it, figured it out. But we will save money, because now we have one specific one.
Yes.
Okay. So these numbers here reflect...
Those are the same numbers that were in the old contract, or the ones that were...
The one that was presented previously there.
Yeah, that were not voted on, or were, so not counted. And I will, I did a couple of cosmetic pages, and if you want...
Did you really just put readers on with that?
It's not the first time I've done. If I was, I moved a lot of things down in the footnotes just to clean up the body so that it was easier to read and easier to understand. And that's, and that's a lot of the stuff with the seasonal and the division of pay and where it comes from.
Thank you.
So it just, it cleaned it up, because there's so many parentheses and this and that. This is really kind of the first total revision of this, this ordinance to be done since I've been here. It's always just a piecemeal, piecemeal, so it's all...
Do you have any questions? I, you guys know my feelings, I think they either need to be union, I mean, this is way back, because the administration is not us. It needs, they either be, need to be with one unions, or they need to be salary. Putting them in the middle like this isn't fair to them, it's not fair to the other unions. I'm the only one that feels that way.
I guess I don't understand the salary mandate. If, I, I understand why they maybe don't want to be in the union, but I, I don't understand what the downfall of being salary would be.
I don't think there is any. I think it benefits them. I think it benefits, like, Joyce, do you have two girls that work for you? It benefits her to be over them.
Well, I don't know that they make enough to qualify...
To be salary.
Yeah, because that number just went up, I don't remember what the...
And they're also at-will employees. If I, we're no longer here, the next auditor would have the option of bringing your own people in.
And that's why they're not...
That's, so, I mean, that's just a government...
That's why they're not in the union. And I sort of understand why that office is not in the union.
Yeah. I mean, the mayor's office is... It comes out as in the union. I didn't like that happen before I got here, but they did it for their own protection.
There are certain positions that are, that are officers of the city, that are political appointments, if you will, administrative assistant, service safety director, high assistant, pro assistant. Those are political appointments, so they serve as a will of the, whatever the amount of benefits.
Correct.
So that's, that's why they're in the at-will. The, there's only seasonal positions that are, that are hourly, that are covered. But as far as the being salary, the issue becomes whether or not they, they earn enough to be in that exempt salary position. Because that, that number went up drastically just like two years ago, and I don't remember what that number is.
Does that, that number that you're talking about, where does that fall in? I mean, is that with the city, the city charter, or...
No, that's, that's IRS rules. That, that's an IRS rule for, for salary employees to be exempt from overtime and all those other types of things.
Well, and with the city?
Yes.
Because I know other salaried people that work at factories that make...
A lot less.
A lot less.
Same, same. We have salaried employees that, that make $14 an hour or $12.
Average $14.
Yeah.
And there are salary, and there are salaries that are exempt from overtime, and so there's...
Well, we have co-ops coming out and stuff, so they would be exempt, then, is what you're saying?
Salary, under IRS rules, a typical salary employee is exempt from, from CD overtime, or some of the other benefits, and that's the trade-off of being salaried. Some of those who don't work for, those who work more for...
So let's just say Joyce's girls work salary, and she needed them to work over. You're saying that they can't work over?
No, they can't be paid for overtime.
Can't be paid.
They work for free.
But other people, well, it's not really free, because they're salary. They're paid to do a job.
Right. But they're not going to get paid extra for staying over. That's what he's saying.
But that's up to, that would be, I'm using you as an example, sorry.
Correct, yeah.
But it's up to Joyce whether they would get paid overtime or not. Just like it's up to my boss's boss whether the salary not exempt gets paid overtime. He can take an engineer and working 14 hours a day and only paying for eight.
Right.
So I'm saying...
Mr. Chair? Yeah, a few years ago, when I was still working, I worked a salary decision. And we had two separate salary groups. One was called exempt, and one was not exempt. So that you have, the one group was able to get the overtime pay, and the other group was not. I don't remember which group it's not, but...
But anyway.
So when you leave, and someone else becomes auditor, they get to bring their own people in?
They can.
And these two girls would be...
I don't think it's always...
Right.
I think we do, but yeah, they can.
Right, but I'm saying, these two girls could be out of the job then.
It's just like if the county auditor...
Yeah, I guess I didn't realize. And that happens on county level, state level, yeah.
Judges, yes.
I knew judges did that, I didn't know it was that way here. I did know the mayor's office did that. I didn't, I, I just don't see why you'd get rid of somebody who knows the job already and bring in somebody who doesn't have it.
Unless you got a police, yeah.
All right. Do you have any other questions?
I have no questions.
And do I have, can I intervene in motion?
I move to accept this.
Move on then.
The council moves.
Do I have a second?
Emergency or not, emergency.
I'll ask Joyce, is there a need for this to be an emergency at this point?
Been waiting all year.
I know, I'm asking, you know, if you can give me a good reason.
I just...
Here, just get it done.
I, I personally would rather do it as an emergency, just so that it's taken care of.
Well, I'm asking if she can give me a good reason, and I'm all for it. If it makes things easier on you, that's good enough for me.
I'd like to see it go through, I mean, they will wait for...
I'll move to accept to the head group, which applies.
Or the state legislature. There will be...
Do I have a second? I'll second, just go back to committee.
As long as it doesn't, you know, that doesn't muddle things up, so it can't pass.
If there's no other discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good to have done.
I have a question, because we are missing a few council members, and we're going to be for a while. Is it being an emergency, a downfall or a plus? An emergency just makes it so that it goes into effect once it's passed without, immediately without having to wait the third day.
But we don't...
If you're going to wait the second reading, it will be six months.
That's what I'm asking. So everybody...
Bruce would have to be back.
We only have five people at this point, that's why I'm asking. I don't know how long Bruce is going to be off, I'm just, and that's not my business, but I'm just saying be aware, we only have five people.
Waiving of the second and third reading is different than emergency.
Okay.
That's two separate things.
All right, I have, referring, I have appropriations that I am referring to committee that Joyce has received. Number one is appropriations to the general fund, it's helping us with free money. So I will turn it over to the auditor.
Okay. This was brought to my attention this morning for the police department, and Officer Keegan may be able to explain it better than me, but it, this is a grant from Metrich, and it's a transport vehicle for our Operation Hope and Quick Response Teams who take people to rehab. And we qualify, because we have this program already in place, the county does not. So they're saying, you know, they, they want to give us this money for a vehicle, but we had to get things in place to be able to do it, because we have to buy the vehicle, then they will reimburse us. So this is just going to be an in and out for us, and police department will have a vehicle. So that was brought to my attention this morning, and so I thought, well, if we're going to have one appropriation, everything that, that's on here, you know, I'd rather do it in one piece instead of piecemeal down the road, so these other two things I held up for a while. But when we did get our check from the county for the coronavirus relief fund, when I had talked to Joan about it originally, she told me, you know, $200,000, but it ended up after it was all calculated, that we got $212,813.28. So I'd like to appropriate that additional $12,813.28. Then the fire department received a donation earlier this month for $750 through the Elks. And our acting chief was in this morning and said, are you going to appropriate that pretty soon? Because we got some equipment we want to buy, and I think I might need that. So I said, well, I'll refer that tonight, too. So, so I've got three appropriations here. It's all money that we either already have or will be coming to us. It's not coming out of our current coffers, so, you know, it's free money, basically, all three of them.
Can you explain about that vehicle?
It was through Metrich, Metrich works on apartments. And they tried to get Graham one secured to run Metrich out of Mansfield's office there. They, different places, because they always are reaching out for different money. And some of these other places, they had the quick response teams for the, for, you know, addicts and everything else to get into the rehabs and everything, and we go around and we talk with them. They wanted all those places to have vehicles, you know, to be in place. So when Metrich reached out to all the different agencies, the different counties, they wanted to know how many agencies were actually doing this. So I think there ended up being like six, eight agencies that did it. So then they said, well, with the money that we have, $25,000, we'll give it to you for a vehicle. So the only thing we had to do was get it to that figure, and if it was over, then we had to pay the difference. But we was able to get a vehicle at the $25,000 mark.
Currently, you're using our current vehicles?
Yes.
So this will free up our cruisers and...
They freed up the cruiser, and I think the city's one reflex. They free up the cruiser and I think the city's more reflexive against that, so that would free up your guys to be able to.
I don't have any questions, anybody else have any questions?
Sounds good. Okay, motion? Got a motion? As an emergency, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right, if there's no other questions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed and I will adjourn finance at six thirty.
Sorry, I couldn't resist. I'll call health and safety order at six thirty PM. First item up is our traffic control map changes. Letter dated July fourteenth from the mayor's office is addressed to health and safety committee. The city besides traffic commission would like to recommend two amendments to the traffic control map. Number one is to add two stop signs at South Lane and Rensselaer Street on the southeast and northwest corners. And number two is to add no parking on the north side of River Street from Tiffin to Perry. If you'll notice here on the next page, page one twenty-four of the traffic control map is where it's showing the two stop signs. Let me see where she worded it, this is how it's currently worded. Lane and two stop signs at Rensselaer, and so it would just be added to. Basically it's turning that in before we stop, there's no, that's been that way now for probably four months. They did a ninety-day trial, the ninety-day trial came to an end with no objections and the traffic commission voted to make that a permanent change. I for one am in favor of. The second one, there you can see that doesn't have any current, no parking on River Street, that's just, there's the building there and I think there are some people parking there and creating a little bit of a bottleneck for people trying to get around them, so there's no parking there. So again, I've had no objection to those two, so I guess I'll ask if there's any questions of either.
I don't care for the stop sign.
I can tell you from the years that I worked in EMS, it's unbelievable why that particular intersection had multiple rollover accidents that occurred at that intersection.
I thought it was Don Teal, the owner, I remember it was Don Teal.
I can recall at least three in my time and then there was one after I retired here more recently. I had to add very interesting.
One street intersection is where I remember two.
Yeah, this one I can tell you at least a total of four in the past fifteen years. But there's a lot of people that win that light if they're heading southbound. You'll notice a lot of people are going probably a little faster than they should be, but it's one of those intersections as you look up, don't see anybody coming, then you perceive when they're right there, so.
Can I ask, have you noticed any difference?
I don't look at both that much, so I can't say.
Police department, fire department, obviously you're both are at the traffic meetings and they were, they were both in favor of.
Yeah, but I just wanna talk to one who drives, who's out on the road all the time, so.
Andrew? Oh, you yell at me at home about it, but I won't come up.
He didn't like it.
I didn't speak up, what?
I will tell you, funny story though, it was the, the first week they put the signs up on the garbage truck, it rolled right through. You, you get accustomed to certain things.
I've got a few times.
I have too, I wasn't gonna say anything. My, my dad did too.
I think it creates more of a hazard if you don't know, if you know it's there, somebody's gonna roll through there.
We should put a light there. We gotta imagine.
We have, we have a couple extra lights, I think.
We do have a couple extra.
I would entertain a motion to accept these changes to the traffic control map.
I'll make that motion.
So now let's go back to council, if you have a guess.
Aye, second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same, that motion carries.
Mr. Chair, I'm assuming that is regular legislation?
That is regular, yeah, no need for emergency. The vacant building registry, I would like to pull that from tonight's conversation. And due to Mr. Trukey not being here, I feel that that deserves to have all of the committee presence, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna pull it off the agenda for this evening.
Give me more time to read this.
Well, yeah, you can take it and read it and formulate more questions. I, I think for the benefit of having all of us here for that conversation, I, I'd feel better about that. Is there anything else to come before health and safety, if anyone has? Nope, all right, if not, adjourn health and safety at six thirty-five. And is there any public participation, participation from anyone here in attendance that wishes to speak this evening? About anything that we had to talk about tonight that may upset you? I was giving you every opportunity to, but after tonight you can't say anything. All right, with nothing else, then I'm gonna ask for a motion to adjourn the joint regular committees. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same, motion carries. And you also noticed you had an ad hoc minutes or ad hoc, we're gonna hold that since we don't have a forum.